This is the Mendon Select Board. We will call the meeting to order at 5:35. As far as adding or deleting any items to the agenda, we are going to table. Can I table that now? The special meeting, 6:21. The special meeting minutes. We will do this at our next meeting. Does anyone have anything to add? And I have nothing to take away. Okay. I make a motion to approve the agenda as written, tabling the 6:21 special meeting minutes.
I second it.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will. Everybody have a chance to look over the orders, the payroll.
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the orders for 6:26, 23,
Second half.
I'm going to put steps down in seconded. And then just require them all in favor now.
Oh, all in favor? Say aye. I'll just put those back in my mailbox for you guys to sign when you have a chance. And...
That was your place.
What's that?
Everybody...
Okay.
Thank you, Al.
And approving the minutes from 6:12. Did everyone have a chance to go over them?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 6:12.
One second, Beth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the year-end financials.
So Nancy had sent out an email earlier today that she did not have the year-end financials due at all this last week. So she will be preparing that for the first meeting in July. She typically will give you different options and scenarios as far as she anticipates a surplus, on what to do with that surplus in rolling into next year's tax rate, as well as potentially reserving funds for particular purposes that you can either utilize by state statute authority now or that you ask the voters at town meeting 24 to utilize the surplus funds for a specific purpose. So this is how setting the tax rate works. Because she's not going to, I'm just going to give steps and leave a little rundown on how to set the tax rate. So the budget was passed at town meeting, so we know how much money to raise in taxes. So we will roll over the surplus funds to offset the amount that we need to raise in taxes. And you will motion to approve the tax rate either at that meeting or at the second meeting in July. Typically, we like to try to get the tax bills out within as much notice as possible. So Nancy will be looking for us to set the tax rate at either the July end meeting or the second meeting in July. And, you know, we pretty much do a nice rundown and recap of how, which tax rates and what percentages they've gone up or down or stayed the same from last year, so they can compare what's going on. We don't set the tax rate for education, but the numbers are given to us, so we do set the overall tax rate with the homestead and residential... the homestead residential rate and the non-residential rate. I will email you a copy of last year's analysis so you can take a look at it and be familiar with that as we change the course for this year. So that's just a little recap of that. Oh, and highway funds. By statute, you're able to roll over highway funds without voter approval. So there is going to be some sort of recommendation that I'll give you regarding rolling over some of the unspent highway funds in order to transition with our new road crew that we will have to overlap of personnel and services and training expenses, whatnot, going into the next fiscal year. So, and you can let me know if you have any questions about that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay. I don't have any announcements.
I don't have any announcements, but I'm just going to take this opportunity to give a thank you to those that participated in Group Four's open study, Local Concerns Meeting, that was held on June 21st. It was very interesting to hear from the business owners and residents that were in attendance on their opinions and ideas about Group Four. Anyone that was unable to attend that meeting, I will have the presentation by VHB engineers posted on our website here tonight or tomorrow. And after reviewing that presentation, if you have any... if anyone has any comments, and that is... you don't have to be a resident of Mendon to weigh in on that. So if anyone is interested in making comments, they can email me at mendonsadmin@comcast.net, and I can forward those comments to our engineer.
And we're on to announcements. We do have someone entering the building, so I'll wait and see if they have. Hi, Mr. Harrison. We have Jim Harrison.
Do you have any public comments on the floor?
No.
Okay. No public comment.
Okay. Right on to business. Jim, I'll give you a moment. Your letter A. You were up first, whenever you're ready. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Where do you want me to go? Are you there for your microphone?
Oh, if he could come up to the microphone, it will be easier for those, because we are recording, to see him speaking.
There or here?
Sure. Plenty of room up there, too.
Good evening.
Hello, Jim.
Nice to see you.
Thank you for the opportunity to join you virtually and in person. I just wanted to use the opportunity, now that the 2023 legislative session is behind us, to check in and certainly open to any thoughts or ideas, comments, or criticisms that the Select Board members may have for the past session and any recommendations going forward to 2024. Some of you may have seen my short report this morning and the email, but essentially, I was just trying to recap last week's so-called veto session. When we adjourned in May for the regular 18-week session, we set a date to come back in June in case any bills were vetoed and any bills that needed to be acted on. One of those certainly fit that, and that was the state budget, because all things stop on June 30th if we don't have a budget. So the legislature, there were seven vetoes after May 12. When the legislature adjourns, there's a variety of bills, probably something like 70 bills got passed in the last week or two of the session, our final passage, and those are sent to the governor in pieces to give ample opportunity to review and look at and consider. Seven of those were vetoed, the biggest of which was the state budget. The legislature overrode that veto last week. Another significant piece of legislation was the Child Care Support Bill. The governor had proposed a proposal without new taxes, using existing revenue sources. That wasn't enough to the proponents of childcare, so they enacted a bill with a new payroll tax. And that... So that veto was overridden. There were two charter bills that were overridden as well. One allows 16-year-olds to vote in local elections in Braderboro. So that passed and was overridden. The governor had vetoed that, arguing that things should be the same in every community. The other one related in Burlington, allowing non-citizen residents to vote again in local elections. They cannot vote in state elections. Our constitution does not allow that, but the constitution's not silent on local elections. Another bill that was overridden has to do with the Office of Professional Regulation. There was a wide variety of fee increases on annual licenses, everything from surveyors to barber shops to dentists to dental hygienists. So a number of those all increased to $207 million. The governor wasn't a fan of the increase, so that veto was overridden as well. And then there was two bills that the legislature did not take up because they did not have the votes to override. One had to do with legislative compensation, which would have increased the pay and benefits to legislators over the next couple of years. That will be revisited next session. I think, quite frankly, legislators were trying to avoid that discussion during an election year. So... But if they want to increase over and above the annual cost of living, it will need to be taken up next year. And the other bill had to do with law enforcement interrogations. There was a bill passed that the governor vetoed that set up very specific restrictions on interrogation of persons under 22. Law enforcement did not want their hands held on that. The governor vetoed it. And again, being short of the votes to override in the Senate anyhow, that bill will perhaps be amended next year and considered in a different view. So that kind of summed up the session last week. It was one day. Many had expected it to go longer, but if you're just voting, it doesn't take very long. And there was another bill having to do with the motel program that does allow for extension of existing tenants in the motels, but very much more specific guidelines. And once they have a bed for them in transitional housing or something, then they're out of the program. So that continues to next March, money permitting. So that received quite a bit of attention. During the regular session, as you may be aware, the annual property tax yield bill was established and passed for the coming year. I assume Nancy has that. I can certainly share that with you. The yield did go up, as it typically does with... based on the growth of the Ed Fund and the growth of school spending. So I'll leave that with Val. And another bill of interest, I'm sure, to communities is the reappraisal issue. Beginning of the session, given the large increase in property values throughout the state, you know, certainly in Killington and surrounding areas, it was getting to a point where it was probably next to impossible to do all the required reappraisals based on the state formula when you're out of deviation enough. So the legislature did take that issue up. It was initially a request by the League of Cities and Towns to do something. So a bill did pass. There is a, I believe, a temporary freeze on the trigger mechanism. And there's a study looking at possibly the state taking over the appraisal system. We've heard from folks that think that's a good idea. Someone else do it. And we've heard others that are reluctant to give up that local control. So stay tuned on that one. We will... We've asked for some more information and looking at a possible plan, and I think that will be looked at next January by the legislature as well. So I'll leave it at that. It was an interesting session. I'll say that. On one hand, we have a governor who is, by recent polling, the most popular governor in the country. And then we have a supermajority in the legislature that believes that they have a mandate as well. And they have chosen to ignore compromise on some of the key bills. So that's my own editorial. I'm not sure it's healthy to do that, especially when it comes to the budget. We all look at things differently. We all have different life experiences we bring to the table. We represent different areas of the state. So some of that is perhaps goes without saying. But when you do the budget, I believe there should be some type of accommodations made that will hopefully keep people... that everyone owns it, not just one party or the other party. The budget overall increase exceeded 13%. Some of that's one-time spending, but even the ongoing base spending was up over 8%. And quite frankly, unless revenues come in, you know, at a good clip, that will be unsustainable, and it will force some hard decisions going forward. So stay tuned. I mentioned this morning that our state economic forecast is done twice a year. The next one by The Economist will be July 31. And we'll have a better picture then as to what it looks like in the coming year and whether or not the revenue will need to be downgraded, stay the same, or even increase. So we'll see. That could tell us a lot, whether the governor was being cautious, overly cautious in the legislature, being overly optimistic or right on the mark. So we'll see in another month. So anyhow, I'll quit.
Thank you. Any questions? Or comments?
Well, thank you for that recap. Have you met all of our board members?
I haven't met your newest board member. I think I met Mr. Bridges at one of the earlier meetings. But yes, I... Is it Lisa?
So Lisa Brooke.
Okay. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Jim. Nice to meet you.
Yeah. Well, thank you for joining the board and serving the community.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions, anyone?
I don't... I don't have any questions.
No, we will send them to you if we have them.
No, I know you will.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Good to join you. And hopefully, everyone has a good summer and that the board chair doesn't make you meet every week, so...
Thank you.
Anyhow, take care. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Jim.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Letter B, the recreation playground project. Liam is not here.
You all received copies of the newest final bill from Miracle. So I think we can, you know, just take a look at this and approve it. Lisa, did you have any specific questions regarding this? I know that you previous... got over the previous ones with a fine two phone and asked those questions from Liam.
No, it looks like they removed the mulch that was included in there and the addition of the extra support system that is added in there. It's in there now and was also... No, it looks fine.
So Liam was looking for approval to get this equipment ordered and on their schedule for installation. In addition to this would be the price of the mulch or the material that we put underneath the playground, as well as some excavation work that includes the prep area for installation. At the last meeting, we discussed a potential fundraising campaign. And to date, Liam and I have not met in order to work out what the details of that would be in order to come back to this or for approval to do a capital campaign or to look for other funding sources.
And we're still looking at a November installation? Was it... they just started switching over to the following?
I think that is... that is going to depend on if we can get those other pieces in line before November. You know, it's not just there installation, but when we can get the playground done as well. And keep still looking for raises on that.
Okay. All right. That's good.
Yeah. So it potentially could be November, otherwise this person is free.
Fair. Would that extra funding, that was needed, just the excavation or are we looking at wood shifts and stuff?
Well, it's just narrowing down the total budget. So we have allocated $50,000 for... from the ARPA fund. And so if... they just have to figure out where they want to hold the money from or request the money from. If they were able to raise between $5,000 and $10,000 in the capital expense, that would not require us to go back and utilize or go back and ask for additional funds through ARPA, because those are earmarked for some other projects. And if we want them to go as far as we can, there's the reserve fund that can also afford some of the expenses. So it's really trying to figure out... We're probably packing 10% of the budget at this point.
Now, the recreation budget, is that getting utilized to the full sum? That's the recreation fund, the reserve fund. And yes, that will be utilized to an extent, depending on what the final cost come in at. As well as the, you know, keeping that expansion equipment also on the table that we applied for a grant for and were unsuccessful this year, on whether we could apply for that again next year or pieces and parts of it, like the AARP verlock, which are placemaking, might purchase some of that equipment or, you know, we could look at smaller mini-grants that help fund those exceptories. But the unit that we have potentially on order is up in town of Proctor. So if you want to go take a look at it, it's the same exact one constructed in Proctor. So I guess you guys could entertain a motion to approve the expense with Miracle
I make a motion to approve the amount of $59,038.17 with the Miracle place up, 15 million associates.
A second half.
All in favor? Say aye.
All.
Okay. Letter C, the Rutland County Sheriff contract. Sarah and I had an opportunity to talk to Sheriff Fox today. And he was very informative. I think the biggest thing was how we are billed now. Should their hours be less one week and they would make up for it the next week? We're only billed for what we get, which is different from our last contract. Is that correct?
Yeah. And specifically, he did... he was confident that he'd be able to provide a service at 32 hours per week. And if for some reason they were called to another town to respond or they had a staffing issue where a shift was not covered, that they would try to make up for those hours within the month instead of allowing them to get behind and then they couldn't catch up. Because we did express that that's not the greatest benefit for the town of Mendon. And so he is currently down one officer or one deputy, and they're looking to hire at least two deputies in the next month or so. Some of the other issues that we talked to him about was providing the town in the actual schedule so that the office staff and the board knew when the sheriff went on, so the schedule will be sent to us. Was there one other thing that you had?
Fair. We literally talked about trying to keep the same officers.
Yes, keeping the same officer. Now, yeah, and we expressed that that was really of importance to us to not have deputies be reappointed mid-year, to at least have them on a contracted basis, and that if, that if there was a shortage of personnel because somebody went on vacation, that's understandable, but that we would be applying one officer to get to know the town and do community places and get to know our townspeople, and they would feel comfortable, understanding, and knowing the, the rock and the dirt. So as well as doing patrols in all of our neighborhoods, that they are compensated.
And you said he sounded pretty confident that he built up of all these?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, he said, he stated that he's going to end this contract approximately 40 hours short of our contract. Now, they have been doing additional patrols recently in order to mitigate that difference, and so it was just discussed with them that they, they do that on a monthly basis instead of accumulating them towards the end of the contract. So I do recommend that you approve the Rutland County Sheriff contract for fiscal year 44 as presented.
Did it sound like you'd like to have a good productive meeting with him?
Yeah.
You did. It was thorough. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll make a motion. I didn't catch that, Seth. I'll make a motion to approve the Rutland County Sheriff's...
We're all good.
Rutland County Sheriff's contract for this fiscal year as presented. 2023. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay. Letter D, under business, town office generator contract.
So just a recap. This was a quote from Rob Stubbs that was submitted with, submitted prior to applying for the homeland security contract or the emergency operations center grant. So this is just approving their quote in order to get that equipment on order. The installation will be scheduled for the beginning of September, and all construction needs to be complete by September 15.
Are there any questions? I'll make a motion to...
No questions.
No? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Rob Stubbs quote for the generator at $16,100.
I second it.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Do you need a signature on the back of this, Sarah?
Yeah. Yeah. Please sign. I think the one that I put on the table that's black was just one-sided, potentially. Either way, I, I will scan it for my intended, to make sure that one is left on, so I can get that to them tomorrow.
Okay. Letter E, under business, public information requests. Lisa, you spoke with several state agencies that requested that we pass these on to our lawyer, and that's, that's the step we've taken?
Yes. Have you done any communication back to the public information request?
Have I refunded back to anyone? No, I have not refunded back to them. I, I will refund that with a word.
Okay. So that was provided by your attorney, and you can go ahead and do that, then it's the type of word that you get.
Sure. Thank you, Lisa, for doing all of that.
Not a problem.
Any other questions or comments about that, the public information requests? All right. I have nothing else on the agenda. We can adjourn the meeting at 6:13.